Good evening and welcome to the May 21st Limerick County Planning Commission meeting. My name is Patrick Rowe and it's the tradition of the Planning Commission to start each hearing with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand and join me.
Our Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being with us tonight. Copies of the agenda are located by the door if anybody needs those. We'd ask everybody to please mute your cellphones. The members of the Planning Commission are volunteers. I'm going to ask each member of the Commission to introduce themselves, beginning with Commissioner Duffy.
Good evening. My name is Connor Duffy. I've been on the Planning Commission for about three years now and I reside in Timmouth.
My name's Adam Eggleston. I live in southeast Fort Collins and I've been on the Planning Commission since last year.
My name is Nick Cassidy. I've been on the Planning Commission for about a year and I live in south Fort Collins.
Good evening. I'm John Weiss. I've been on the Commission for about a year and I also live in Timmouth.
I'm John Slutsky. I live in southeast Fort Collins, been on the Commission since January of 2022 and you can do your math.
My name's Shelby King. I've been on the Commission since July of '23 and I live in La Porte.
Great. And do we have any Commissioners online with us this evening?
We do have Commissioner Barrick online.
Okay. Commissioner Barrick, can you introduce yourself?
Yes, good evening everyone. My name is Jordana Barrick and I live up in the Livermore area now and I've been on the Planning Commission for almost five years.
Great, thanks. And again, I'm Patrick Rowe. I live in northwest Fort Collins and I've been on the Commission, this is my fourth year now. Jenny Axmaker is the Planning Manager. Ms. Axmaker, would you mind introducing the staff in attendance tonight and providing meeting protocol for us?
It would be my pleasure. Joining me here at the dais, we have Christine Luckerson from our county attorney's office, we have County Planner Justin Curry, we have Principal County Planner Matt LaFardy. From our planning administration team, we have Christina Scrutches. Then across the way, we have Senior Planner Samantha Mott and we have Connor Sheldon from our engineering department and we have Leah Schneider joining us from the health department. With that, I would respectfully request that all members of the public silence their electronic devices. If you'd like a copy of the agenda and hearing procedure instructions, you can grab one in this wood tray by the door or if you're joining us online, you can find that on our website, limerick.gov/bocc-commissioners-meetings. The hearing procedures for tonight, for each discussion item, will begin with a presentation from county staff, followed by a presentation from the applicant, with time for clarifying questions from the Commissioners. There will also be an opportunity for any members of the public to address the Commission with comments on the matter. There will be a time limit for public comment to three minutes per comment, or per commenter. Both the applicant and county staff will have an opportunity to respond to any questions or concerns raised during public testimony. The Commission will then ask any remaining questions of the applicant or staff before entering into deliberations and working towards a decision on the matter. During public comment, please wait to speak until you're recognized by the chair. Please maintain civility, refraining from audience applause, comments or disruptions, whether positive or negative. Please make all comments to the Commissioners from the podium right here. We do have a portable mic available if you need. Please make sure and state your name at the beginning of your comments and provide the spelling of your name if it's unique. Please speak directly into the microphone so that those joining us on Zoom can hear too. For hybrid, for our hybrid meeting, remote participants will be muted until they're recognized by the chair. If an online attendee wishes to speak or request a consent item be removed, please use the raise your hand function on the Zoom control bar or star nine on your phone. Upon request, assisted listening devices are available for the hearing impaired. There are six items on the consent agenda tonight and we have zero items on the discussion agenda. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Axmaker. I have just some brief comments about the role of the Planning Commission for the audience. The Planning Commission acts as an advisory board to the Limerick County Commissioners, review and make recommendations on land use issues outside of town and city boundaries. Some land use decisions will also be heard by the Board of County Commissioners. We come to these meetings and hearings unbiased and listen to staff's reports, public testimony, as well as information provided by the applicant. The Planning Commission is the final decision-making body for location and extent reviews, as well as amendments to and approvals of the Limerick County Master Plan, sub-area plans and amendments. The Planning Department staff provides us with a comprehensive package of information about land use applications and plan amendments. We gain insight from the information viewpoints that you all provide, so we appreciate your attendance and participation. Your input is welcome. So with that, I will first ask, are there any amendments to the agenda?
No amendments from staff.
Okay, great. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes from our April 16th meeting. If there are any amendments, we entertain those and otherwise we'll entertain a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the minutes from April 16, 2025.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Slutsky?
I'm staying.
Barrick?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Weiss?
I'm staying.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Eggleston?
Yes.
Chair Rowe?
Yes. So minutes stand approved. Next order of business is our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are meant to be non-controversial and routine items that will not be discussed unless requested by a Commissioner or member of the audience. The consent agenda and all items that are part of the consent agenda will be voted on as a whole. This allows us to focus and spend more time on discussion items. Tonight's agenda consists of only consent items, so I'll just briefly introduce those in terms of the title. Yes. That was a change, so yeah, at the, I think the instruction of the Commission, the Board of County Commissioners, they've asked that we no longer take public comment. For this means it was, it was a kind of a board-wide decision. I don't know if staff wants to provide additional information.
Yeah, it's a policy update from the Board of County Commissioners to remove public comment from any board that it's not required by a state statute to accept public comment. And that's to encourage individuals to come to the Admin Matters meeting to address any public comment directly to the Board of County Commissioners.
So let me introduce the items on our consent agenda and then I'll find out if there's members of the, my fellow Commissioners that want to pull any items or anybody from the audience. So there's six items this evening. The first is the New Bower Conservation Development, file number 22-Land-4225. The second is the Jacobs Conservation Development, file number 21-Land-4170. Third item this evening is the Van Hattam Rezoning, file number 22, Zone 3311. The fourth item this evening is the Emissaries of Divine Light amended special review and appeal, and that's file number 23, Zone 3564. Fifth item is Amendments to the Limerick County Land Use Code. That's number file, file number 25, Code 0283. And our sixth and final item is also a Land Use Code Amendment. And our sixth and final item is also a land use code amendments and that's file number two-five, code-zero-two-eight-five. So with that, do any, do any Commissioners want to remove an item from the consent agenda? Commissioner Weiss?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to remove number six, the land use code amendments.
Okay, six will be polled from the consent calendar and will be our first discussion item. Any other items to be polled by Commissioners? Seeing none, I'll ask the same question of the audience in person or online. Is there anybody here who would like to pull an item from our consent agenda for a full discussion?
I'm John Root, I'd like to poll item number two, Jacob, twenty-one-four-one-seven-zero for a comment.
Okay, member of the audience has requested that we poll item number two, that's the Jacobs Conservation Development, file number two-one-land-four-one-seven-zero. So agenda items six and two are polled. Is there anybody online who wishes to pull an item?
If there are any members of the public that are online that would like to remove an item from consent to discussion, please use the raise hand function now or star nine. There are no hands raised.
Okay. So our consent agenda as modified is items one and then three, four and five. So two and six stand polled. With that, I would entertain a motion to approve our consent agenda.
I move to approve the amended consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
King?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Slutske?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Barrick?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Eggleston?
Yes.
Chair Rowe?
Yes. And the consent agenda stands approved. So unless there's reasons to do it differently, we'll go ahead and just proceed kind of in the, in the same order that they are on our agenda. So we'll start with our first discussion item.
So our first discussion item would be item number two, the Jacobs Conservation?
Correct. And is there a staff presentation on that item?
Yes, there is. Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. My name is Justin Curry and I'll be presenting on the Jacobs Conservation Development. Here's a location of the vicinity map. The parcel in question is the one highlighted in blue here, which is just north of the Laramie County landfill, off of Living Springs Lane and west of Taft Hill and the, or northwest of the Taft Hill and Trilby Road intersection. The applicant is requesting a preliminary plat approval on thirty-five acres to create one new residential lot and one residual lot with a two-acre building envelope, along with an appeal to Article five-three-one-A, which is a required public right-of-way within a subarea land division or subdivision. The applicant is Lonnie Jacobs and the owner as well. It is currently zoned RR-two residential, which will remain the same. And then the utilities and access are as follows. Fort Collins Loveland Water District is the water provider. South Fort Collins Sanitation District is a sanitation provider. It's in the, within the Pooter Fire Authority Fire District. And then access is on this northwest corner here off of Living Springs Lane, which is an existing private road. And again, as mentioned, the lot is thirty-five acres. A little background on the conservation development, so since this is a required for a conservation development based on, based on the zoning and then the availability of public water and public sewer, this is required to do a, what we call a fifty-fifty split from developable land and residual land. And so seventeen and a half acres must be used for residual land, which is required to be conserved in perpetuity or used as agricultural land. And the remaining acreage, which can be a maximum of seventeen and a half acres, can be developed. And in this case, the building envelopes located within the residual land count towards the developable area, as I mentioned, which is the case with this application. There is also, like I mentioned, an appeal to Article five-three-one-A, which is, public right-of-way is required where all roads within the boundaries of land divisions in both urban and rural areas shall be public right-of-way. Staff and more specifically, specifically, the engineering department supports the appeal to allow Living Springs Lane to remain a private road, since the land use code only requires the section of road within a proposed subdivision to be public and cannot require the entire length of a private road outside of that proposed subdivision to change to a public road. Staff wants to avoid having a roadway become a combination of public-private ownership that would create confusion on ownership and maintenance responsibility. So staff is supporting that section remaining. Neighbor notifications, so notifications were sent to five property owners within five hundred feet of the project site and no comments were received. The review criteria is outlined. This is the standards for preliminary plat review and it's explained more in detail within my staff report. So if anyone from the Commission or in the public has questions on that, we can go over that in more detail. And again, with the standards for the review criteria for appeal, again, is outlined in more detail in the staff report. And if anyone asks questions, more specific questions on that, I'd be happy to go over those. With that being said, the Development Service Teams finds that the proposed request meets the review criteria and that we recommend that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the Jacobs subdivision preliminary plat, file twenty-one-land-four-one-seven-zero, and an appeal to Article five-three-one-A of the land use code, subject to the conditions outlined in the staff report. And with that, I'd be happy to take any questions from the Commission. And then also the applicant has someone here to represent them and answer, answer any questions you may have for the consultant.
Yeah, thank you for the presentation, Mr. Curry. Questions of staff, my fellow Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Does the applicant have a presentation? Do they want to do that?
I don't, I'm not sure if they do. I believe they're here just to answer any questions that either the Commission has or that the member of the public has.
Okay. Well, with that, we'll open up the public hearing and take public comment. Is there anyone in the room that would like to give testimony today? Okay, I'm seeing a couple of hands, yeah, if you want to approach and introduce yourself.
My name is John Root. I'm here on behalf of my clients Sandra Bedrin and Stephen Milton. They are property owners in the area. I would like to request that the Commission either deny this application or send it back to staff to have it submitted to the Hidden Springs HOA for comment and approval. There are two reasons for that. The most significant one is that the private road that was referenced with respect to the Section five-point-three-point-one-A appeal is an easement upon a number of privately owned lots. And it's created by a declaration of covenants running with the land on the property. That declaration of covenants is attached in your materials. And if you look at Article seven, section seven, you'll see that a subdivision of a lot within the Hidden Springs HOA requires the approval of the HOA. That's significant here, not because of whether the county can approve the subdivision or not, but because that private road can't be used for access unless the HOA has approved the subdivision of the lot. So just like any other situation where you'd have to go and ask for comment from the water district about whether they're going to provide water, you need to ask the association whether they're actually going to approve the subdivision, because they're the ones who control the private road. They're also the ones who maintain the private road. And this raises another issue under their declaration, which is that under Article five, section two, they will have to reallocate their assessments to account for any increased impact on the road from having a subdivision of lots. My clients have also requested that you take into account that there are a number of these thirty-five acre lots in that area. And approving a subdivision of this one will create a precedent. And you may find yourselves hearing repeatedly, again and again, from owners of the thirty-five acre lots in this area. Well, you did it in this situation, you should do it for us too. And you may find yourself doubling the density of the development in that area. That will create problems with traffic impact. It will create problems with emergency access. This is an area of wildland urban interface and we all understand the fire problems that that presents. There are also potential issues with water. I understand you've got a letter from the state engineer in your packets that says it's okay here, but you don't have an evaluation of what it's going to be like if it happens across the entire area. And this is something that my clients are particularly concerned about. So with that, my clients would request that you recommend denial. Or if you don't do that, at least send it back to staff to send it out for comment to the HOA to see if they're even going to approve this. Because if they don't, there will be no access. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. Yeah, good evening.
Brad Cooper, representing the HOA. Our president's out of town. Building on what he said, same, same thing. HOA voted on this previously. It was a fifteen-to-two vote against. There's been many things happen since then. I found it curious when I, just earlier day, preparing some of this stuff, Googled, describe the beauty of Fort Collins, actually using ChatGPT. The first words were nestled against the foothills. And as mentioned here, this sets a precedent for thirty-three families to say, oh, cool. Thank you. Let's do the same thing. And all of a sudden, the foothills are no longer the same foothills. It's not just the HOA's stance. It's not just individual neighbors. It's not just the safety issues, the road issues, those kinds of things. It's also the Fort Collins community. We saw with the Hughes Stadium property, open space, April twenty twenty-one, sixty-nine percent of Fort Collins voters agreed to spend the money to keep the space open. Sixty-nine percent. We, at a time when America can't agree on anything, that exceeds the supermajority two-thirds level required for the House and Senate to amend the U.S. Constitution. Now, we're not asking for that, obviously, but we are asking you to follow historical intent of the county planners, the current will of the broader community and maintain the beautiful foothills and not break this, not create a precedent that will easily be followed by, again, thirty-three potential families in the area. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cooper. Appreciate it. Others?
Since it's been several decades.
And sorry, sir, could you introduce yourself?
I will. Since it's been several decades, since I've developed, been a major developer in the Laramie County area, I will extend my introduction a little bit. I'm Scott Griffin. I'm a retired professor in construction management from Colorado State University. I'm an engineer. I've held Class B and Class A contractors and supervisors licenses in Fort Collins. I have developed all over the world, including here, Rigdon Farm, at the intersection of Timberline and Drake. So I've, I've played in this venue before. I would remind the Commission that Hidden Springs Ranch was approved in nineteen eighty-nine under the land use code, which allowed subdivision in minimum thirty-five acre lots. At that time, had the subdivision been made any smaller, it would have required the area to have paved, dedicated streets, water and sewer. Water problem's been resolved. Current land use code now allows cluster development. The intent of the cluster development was that we could take large ranches and not break them into thirty-five acre lots, but to cluster the development and have large public area or conservation easements. I think this thirty-five acre subdivision then becomes an unintended consequence of our cluster development requirements. Regardless, any further subdivision will by definition increase traffic on Hidden Springs Road. Now, the staff has recommended a waiver to paragraph five-point-three-point-one-A. In so doing, they have apparently limited their scope to the thirty-five acres. As the previous speaker said, this is not a single thirty-five acre lot. It was approved as a single subdivision with rules in nineteen eighty-nine. So it can't be separated. And by adding traffic to Hidden Springs Road, it appears that you will now violate the traffic requirements on Hidden Springs Road, which you could treat as a collector local or an arterial to the local road that they've been talking about. In any subdivision like this, I would expect to see a traffic study certifying that this subdivision maintains traffic volumes under your required two-hundred trips per day. I see no such traffic study. Further, increased traffic impacts the operations and maintenance of West Ridge Drive. I'm here because I help pay for the operations and maintenance of West Ridge Drive. I see no attempts to offset the impacts of additional traffic, whether it be for one lot or thirty-three. I see no attempts to offset the impacts to Hidden Springs Ranch or West Ridge Estates. Finally, paragraph five-point-three-point-B-point-one requires Commissioners address foreseeable public purpose.
And thank, thank you, sir. Your time is up, but we appreciate your comments.
Okay.
Are there others in the audience here tonight who want to speak? Come forward, sir.
Hi, my name is Paul Ellis. I'm a homeowner on West Ridge Drive as well. I echo all the comments that have been made before. And I think if you were to poll every single homeowner on my road, which is much denser than in Hidden Springs, they would echo the same comments. And I would like to yield the rest of my time to Scott.
I'm not sure. Yeah, we've done that before. I don't think we have. In fact, it's not acceptable, I'm sorry. But you could, if you want to provide the comments to him, he's welcome to make them.
I'm nowhere near as well-prepared as Scott, but he does have a few decades on me. As he said previously, and I would like to echo, further increased traffic impacts the operations and maintenance of West Ridge Drive, something that Scott and myself and every member of West Ridge Drive pays for. I see no attempt to offset impacts through any, and no additional study either. Finally, power back, five-point-three-point-one-point-B-point-one requires Commissioners address foreseeable public purpose before waiving public right-of-way. July nineteen ninety-seven, West Ridge Drive was undercut and partially washed out, stranding West Ridge residents. Our only access was via Hidden Springs Road. We were allowed access then, but this may not be the case in the future. Public dedication solves this problem. My opinion, which is Scott's, but also echoed by myself, is that any further subdivision must include public dedication and paving of Hidden Springs Road. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any others in attendance here that wish to speak this evening? You, sir, go ahead.
Hello. My name's Lonnie Jacobs. I'm the one that's wanting to subdivide this. This has been going on for a while. When I originally asked the HOA to subdivide, they voted, like you said, fifteen-to-two. And I actually had to file a lawsuit against the HOA, went to district court and I was awarded the ability.
And sorry, sir, are you the applicant? Is that right? Yeah, so I'll give you a chance to respond to some of the comments.
Okay, sorry.
That's okay, thanks. Anyone else in attendance this evening? And otherwise, is there anybody online that wishes to speak to this item?
If there are any members of the public that are online that would like to make public comment, please use the raise hand function now or press star nine. There are no hands raised.
Okay, so seeing no other individuals who want to comment, I'll close the hearing. And at this time, yeah, I'll invite you up, sir, if you, as the applicant, if you want to respond to any of the questions or comments that you heard.
Just that I had to actually sue them and I won in district court, won the ability to subdivide. While that process was going on, they actually, the HOA voted and removed the right to. While that process was going on, they actually, the HOA voted and removed the right to be able to subdivide, which was in the covenances. The covenants actually spell it out that you, any landowner had the right to subdivide. After they denied me, then they changed the covenances. So there's no threat of anybody else moving forward with subdivision other than me and another couple that was trying to do the same thing, and they were also denied. And they filed a lawsuit against the HOA and the HOA agreed to let them subdivide if they would drop their lawsuit. So there's going to be two of us doing this. The county is going through everything with the traffic plans that were required. Everything's been done. With that said, it's kind of where it stands.
Okay, yeah, we appreciate that. Thank you. Yeah, so I think it, I assume we want some additional information from staff, maybe? If you guys could just provide some, some additional history on this area and also maybe a response on the, just give, enlighten us on when a tra- traffic study is required. And, you know, I know of at least one other instance where we've dealt with on that cell tower site where we had some concerns over kind of the legality of, of access. And can you tell us how the county addresses that or how we consider it or don't, so?
I can speak generally on some, generally on some of those items. As you can tell by the file number, this was started in twenty twenty-one, where I was not the original planner on this. I inherited it, but I understand like the, the cause, the length of delay, as the applicant mentioned, was that there was a, a legal proceeding going on, a legal outcome. I guess a little more general on HOA's information that the county staff does not, you know, interpret or enforce any HOA covenants or requirements. And that, again, as far as access, a lot of that information, if it's a private access, would rely on the applicant to provide that information showing that, well, it's a private access, we do have the right to use it for what we're, you know, what our application is for. And so rely heavily on them. I don't know if Christine has any other comments. And then as far as more specific traffic questions that were brought up, as far as private roads versus public out in like, when or when not, a traffic study may be required for a particular, particular application. I will let Connor Sheldon answer those in our engineering department.
Okay. Yeah, and is there, can you give us just a little bit more history on the area? So it sounds like this was originally subdivided and allowed to be thirty-five acre parcels, probably by right, I guess. And then what was the zoning at that time? Was it, was it open? Or do you guys know what kind of the history of zoning changes were out there?
I'd have to look up the historical zoning back in nineteen eighty-nine. I believe they said it when, when it was subdivided, but you are correct. Since all the parcels or all the lots are thirty-five acres or larger, a planning process was not required at the time, and it still isn't. If you created any subdivision or any lots that are thirty-five acres or larger, you simply just create the new legal descriptions and take it to the successor and it gets created. So there's no involvement with planning staff, which is, yeah, so we had no review back in the, you know, back in nineteen eighty-nine. There was no staffer, county review of that particular parcel or this project.
Okay. And as a private road, just to kind of reiterate what you're saying, so when it's a private road, then there is no requirement for a traffic study in that instance because it's a private road and private impacts?
Not so much if it's a private road, it's more the, so say if this, if this particular case is only creating one lot, if they were allowed to, per the land use code, they're allowed to create more lots. You know, per, they have more density, they're, they're, they can choose. But since it's only creating one lot, they're say creating six lots, that may trigger a traffic study or something, even if it's a private road, because then that may bring some items up that, oh, this road doesn't meet the basic safety standards or emergency services requirements and things like that. But since they're creating one, as a rule, again, Connor can speak to it more clearly, engineering staff doesn't always require a traffic study when it's, that, okay, the density is being increased.
Justin did great. I'll just go ahead and expand a little bit on everything that he said, starting with the covenants, and Christine can add on this as well. We don't enforce HOA covenants regarding who can and can't use the private road. We do require as a part of the final plat, which is, would be after this preliminary plat, if it got approved, they have to contribute towards road maintenance, or at least make a pretty good faith effort to contribute toward road maintenance as part of the new lot. But as far as, you know, enforcing the covenants of who can and can't use the road, the engineering department doesn't really get involved in that. To expand a little bit on the public-private road comment, there were some comments about why we're supporting the appeal to allow it to remain a private road. The main reason for that is when we have these long-time existing private roads, our subdivision process does require a dedication of public right of way, but we can only get that adjacent to the lots that are subdividing. And so we would end up in this situation where if we did enforce it and did require this public right of way dedication, that we would get just a piece of it. And then, you know, in theory, you know, you could piecemeal your way through and get a couple of sections. But in how that works out is, you know, we're never going to get whole of it. And then we end up with this road that's split, half-public, half-private, sometimes alternating, public-private, public-private. And our land agents within the engineering department really much don't like that. It creates issues for the county land agents. And, you know, as a matter of history, we, we actually used to do that. We used to get these public right of way dedications when we could, even if the road was a long-time existing private road. And we're trying to undo that now. So we don't do that anymore. We don't get these little pieces of public right of way. So that's why we're supporting the appeals to allow it to remain a private road as it's existed. Moving on a little bit to the traffic impact study, so this is in our rural area, so we use our rural area road standards. The rural area road standards have different levels of traffic impact study that can be required. The lowest of those would be what we call a paving threshold study. Basically, it's a situation where maybe a full-blown traffic impact study isn't being required, but you're adding traffic to an unpaved road and we need to see what the trips are on that unpaved road. Well, the threshold for our paving threshold study is to be adding two or more new lots. That's just how our Laramie County Rural Area Road Standards read. So these guys are adding one new lot, so therefore they weren't required to do a paving threshold study. Now, that being said, it is a private road and we do have private road standards. So they were required to complete an evaluation of the private road to sort of provide an engineering analysis. Does this road, as it exists in its private condition, conform to our Laramie County Rural Area Road Standards, private local access road requirements? Essentially, at the end of the day, we just want to make sure, are you providing safe and adequate access that you're adding some new traffic to? So that was sort of where we landed on this one. Again, the, per the Rural Area Road Standards, we can't require paving threshold study. We can require an analysis of the road to make sure it conforms to our private local access road standards. If I missed anything in there, feel free to ask a clarifying question.
Now, Commissioner Duffy?
Mr. Sheldon, the, the West Ridge, West Ridge Drive that connects to the private road, did you have any analysis or jurisdiction over that road? And is that one private or public as well as onto County Road thirty-eight? That both of these roads kind of lead out to? And if you did, would the amount of subdivision on there require a full-blown traffic study?
Again, to just, to answer the last part of that, the amount of subdividing that they're doing, which is one new lot, doesn't warrant a traffic study. That's just how our, our Rural Area Road Standards read. If you're only adding one new lot, we don't request any sort of traffic analysis. And then as far as the Kennero thirty-eight piece, Kennero thirty-eight is obviously public right of way. We did not have them complete an analysis of West Ridge Drive that connects in from the north. They do have access from the south as well.
Okay. And West Ridge Drive is paved, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, other, other questions for my fellow commissioners? Yeah, Commissioner Weiss?
More for my clarification and maybe the county attorney can answer the question, maybe not. I got confused. I understand the HOA and the county camp, whatever, but can you maybe just, they went to district court, the court ruled in favor of the applicant and, but, I don't know. I just want to make sure the legality is all in there as to what they can do and what they can't do.
Sure. So actually, similar to HOA covenants and private agreements, rulings from a court or a court order but binding to private parties, that would not be something for us to interpret either. So if there is a court holding out there that favors one party or the other, and they want to enforce that in a certain way, they need to bring that back to the courts. We are not bound by that court order. All the planning commission can do is review the applications based on the review criteria in front of it and the, the materials submitted by the applicant. So if there is a private court order or a private contract, anything like that, that is not something that is in the purview of the planning commission to interpret and then make a decision based on. Does that make sense? And I will say, I don't know the history of this district court case. I don't know anything about it, but it wouldn't be something that we could consider anyway.
And just a quick follow-on on that. So the, I think you guys, one of you guys said the, as part of the final plat process, there's some sort of attestation that maybe takes place saying that they have access or is, could you just elaborate on that?
I believe Connor made that comment, so I'll let him enter that.
Yeah, so again, you know, we're not getting in the situation of enforcing who won, who didn't win in court, what the sort of access looks like. We're just seeing that there's a private road that meets our road standards that can provide safe and adequate access. And then also placing a requirement that they contribute towards the maintenance of that road, or at least attempt to contribute maintenance to that road to the best of their ability. We wouldn't be interpreting what sort, what the legal access looks like. And then, you know, it, it would become a continued legal situation in this matter. Oftentimes, it's when the legal situation begins, but in this case, it's been going on for some time now.
So, so as part of the plating process, there's some sort of representation that they have legal access? Is that, is that true or?
There's, there's representation that they have access. And whether or not that can be used legally for the purpose of a subdivision is a legal interpretation that the engineering department does not make.
Okay. Other questions from commissioners? And, yeah, and otherwise, we can move on to commissioner deliberation and discussions on this item. If there's no further questions of the applicant or staff. And so, yeah, we, let's, let's go ahead and do that. I really appreciate kind of hearing from everybody in the area. For me, I think, I think it comes down to the, you know, what's, what's legal and proper and is in conformance with the county's zoning and also the land use processes that are available, which this conservation development is one. I'm sure we all have very similar and shared values. And I think to me, kind of where those values need to come out is in the, the county's comprehensive plan. And then how those, how that comprehensive plan influences and gets expressed in terms of how we change our zoning, zoning code and rules and regulations around kind of development standards. But it's, it's, you know, it's just, it's not, certainly not fair and in my, in my mind, appropriate to kind of, you know, on a one-off basis, if, if a particular group of people doesn't appreciate what one neighbor is doing, if it's, you know, legal and in conformance with, with what we have kind of decided as a community, then, you know, I for one will want to support that. So that's kind of where I'm at. Any other commissioners? And otherwise, I entertain a motion.
I can provide a motion. Mr. Curry, is the motion in our packet the one that you would like me to read or do you have an updated motion?
The one in the packet would work.
I move that the planning commission recommends that the board of county commissioners approve the Jacobson, or excuse me, Jacobs Conservation Development File Number Twenty-One Land Forty-One Seventy, subject to the conditions as outlined above.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Roll call, please, Scrutins.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Eggleston?
Yes.
Barrett?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Slutsky?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
Chair Row?
Uh, yes. With that, motion stands approved. And again, I really do appreciate everybody's attendance and we sincerely appreciate everybody's comments on this item. So with that, we'll move on to the next pulled item, which is land use code amendments. That's File Number Two-Five Code Zero-Two-Eight-Five.
Mr. Chairman, if I, if I can?
Yeah.
Thank you. I was told I had to pull the whole, the whole component. However, my interest in, is just the part B, if you will, that deals with the wells and the water. So if there's no issues with anything else, I would prefer just to discuss that part.
Yeah.
Staff is amenable to that as long as the, the chair and the rest of the commissioner as well.
Yeah, agreeable to the chair if that makes sense for everybody else. So, yeah, let's go ahead and do that.
All right. Well, good evening, Planning Commission. Let me get my slides to the correct section. For those of you joining us at home, the first article that we were proposing amendments for, Article Six, related to notice of hearings, neighbor notice and neighborhood meetings. The article that I'm going to go through here right now is Article Four, related to wells and tap moratoriums. The other code updates that's proposed is to Article Nine and relates to wildfire cameras. So the goal in the proposed change to Article Four is to find a reasonable partial solution to a problem that honestly, the county did not create. We are, we have property owners who are impacted in a way in which they subdivided property or purchased property that was already subdivided with the understanding that certain water providers would be able to provide water service to those properties. Things have changed and there are water providers within Laramie County that now have tap moratoriums and can no longer provide water to some of these properties. As I said, the county didn't create this problem, but we're trying to see if we can come up with a reasonable solution to help as, as many folks as we feel we can to, to create a path forward. So with that, we're proposing some updates to Section four point three point seven that talks about when wells are permissible within the adequate public facilities portion of our code. This code update proposes to restructure the section to apply requirements based on property size. And I'll, I'll go through the changes here in a minute. But we divided out into things that apply to anyone who's getting a well, things that apply to properties under thirty-five acres who are requesting a well, and things that apply to properties that are over thirty-five acres that are requesting a well. You might wonder what, why thirty-five acres is the magic number. It's the magic number because you can, as we discussed in the prior case, plot a property greater than thirty-five acres without going through a county-initiated planning process. That also corresponds to the magic threshold that you can apply to get a state well permit for without having to do an augmentation plan. It's a much simpler process. It allows for, potential for some outdoor use of the well. It's not restricted to household use only. And so that's why that, that threshold was identified in this code update. This code update also tries to note a distinction between water service areas and water districts. These are, they function very differently and previously the code has regulated them the same. So a water service area, so someone like a Northern Colorado Water Association, they view themselves as a club. You do not pay a tax, it's not a taxing district. You do not pay property taxes. To be a part of that group, you simply pay the connection or tap fee when you purchase a tap and then you pay your monthly water bill. That operates very differently than a special district. So in East Laramie County, a South Fort Collins Loveland Water District, that is actually a special district under Colorado state law. You pay property taxes to be a part of that district. You have to be formally included into that district. And then you pay the related fees, be it tap fee, monthly water bill, whatever that, that district denotes. And so the previous code requirements said if you were a part of either one of those groups, you couldn't have a well. And the purpose of that was to say it's a best practice that when you are within one of these service areas, the most reliable source of water is going to be to get it from one of those providers. Well, it turns out, I, considering a water service area, the same as a water district, isn't exactly equal. And so this code looks to kind of make that distinction. And so this code looks to kind of make that distinction a little bit clearer. And what it does, it allows a very specific exception for properties within a water service area, not within a water district, to apply for a well if the service area consents. So the, for example, Northern Colorado Water Association would have to provide a letter to the property owner saying they do not object to somebody drilling a well within their service area. And then that property would have to be greater than thirty five acres in size. The only thing that prevents these properties that are greater than thirty five acres in size that are in a water district or in a water service area now from applying for a well is the land use code. The state would still issue them a well permit, but they can't do that because our code currently prohibits it. So we're seeking to remove this land use code roadblock for properties impacted by a tap moratorium that could otherwise apply for this permit through the state. Now, when the state issues a well permit, there is no guarantee that you will actually get water. And there's no guarantee that the water will be consumable. So we wanted to make sure that in allowing people to drill wells, we put in some safeguards that you must do a test well or some sort of proof before moving forward with a building permit that your water can meet the necessary quantity and quality standards in order to serve the property. The other thing that we're proposing to do as part of this code is just to clarify the use of cisterns. It's a little bit ambiguous and we do not want to permit cisterns as a primary water source for a dwelling or development. And so we just tweaked the code language to do that. So with that, would you like me to run through the specific amendments or would you like to to ask questions?
Commissioner Weiss?
That's adequate for me. I mean, I have a couple of questions, but that's can I ask the question?
Yeah, sounds like we're good with the applicant presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead. You can do.
Thank you. So I just want to be sure I understand, okay? If a property owner wants to drill a well, they would have to ask the Northern Water, that area, that association there, permission to drill a well. But if they deny them permission to drill the well, then that's it? It's they can't drill the well?
Correct. But they would have to be located within their service area.
Right.
If they're not located within any water district or any water service area, they can move straight to applying for the well permit.
Understand. So maybe the county attorney, maybe you don't want to talk about it, but the moratorium. How is it, I guess I get confused is between these two types? How can they and what's the basis, I guess, for in for in saying there's a drilling moratorium where we can't provide you water now?
So let me address a little bit of that and then I'll let Christine chime in a bit. So as a a water service provider, and and I'm I'm speaking on their behalf based on previous conversations I've had with them, but by no means I'm an expert in this. Their number one priority is to provide for their existing customers. Their their priority is not to provide for new customers. They have to meet the commitment that they've made to those folks who have purchased a tap and are paying monthly water fees. I believe in the case of Northern Colorado Water Association, they believe they had a certain capacity of water. They did updated studies when we were going through the pandemic, when people were at home, a significant amount more than they used to be, and they realized their projections were off. And the best way for them to maintain the current service that they offer was to no longer provide additional water service unless they were to identify a new water source to help buffer that service. Do you want to add anything to that?
Unless you have additional questions for me, Christian Weiss.
No, I guess the question then is, but we don't have, the county doesn't have a way to determine who's right or wrong. In other words, is there an adequate amount of water in the aquifer that would permit? And if you allow them to in essence go bypass the tap moratorium, we don't know what the impact would be on a drawdown onto the existing aquifer.
We do not have that information, but that's one of the reasons why we're only recommending this for properties thirty five acres in size and larger. Because the state believes that's a big enough property area that they feel comfortable issuing a well permit. And they're the the group that's in charge of certifying that this will not injure any other one other person's water rights. So we are specifically not recommending that folks with a lot ten acres, four acres smaller in size than thirty five acres be able to drill a well because we can't verify that it wouldn't impact other people's water rights.
Okay, then my, I'm sorry, my final question is, in roughly speaking, how many potential applicants, if you will, would you have take advantage of this scenario if approved?
So we had two applicants previously appeal this code section to the board of county commissioners. You guys do not see appeals to the code. They both properties were greater than thirty five acres and they wanted to be able to drill a well within the Northern Colorado Water Association and both of those cases were granted. I know our emergency services facility that's proposed to be located up on La Porte is also near La Porte is also struggling with this issue. They have a tap from Northern Colorado Water Association. They are not able to get a larger tap because of the tap moratorium, and so they're looking to drill a well just for irrigation purposes. We do get inquiries on about a weekly basis of property owners that are unable to get water source supplies because they're subject to a tap moratorium. However, I think in the work session, I was able to show you all a couple of maps. A majority of the properties, at least in the Northern Colorado Water Association area, are either greater than thirty five acres or are already developed. So we don't think that we're going to have a huge number of property owners that this won't help to solve the problem, but there definitely will be some.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioner Weiss? Commissioner Slutsky?
So aside from my question, property owners can actually buy a tap from another citizen. There are, there are lots of properties in in that service area and some of them I know have more than one tap. And so there are ways for people to get get water, but I don't think it's easy and it's a little pricey would be my guess. My question has to do with wells that are not that do not deliver enough water. They're just, the water's good, but there's not a lot of it. And what's common is for people to store water. Is that considered a cistern?
So you could, I believe we would permit you, and this is actually what the emergency services building is doing. They're going to have a cistern as supplemental supply so that they can get irrigation water and potential fire suppression requirements met. So as long as you had a a source of water that was reliable, I think we would be open to augmentation through having a cistern as a supplemental supply. It just can't be the primary.
Sounds good. Well, we're a little, I think, out of order in terms of just our normal progression here. So we heard the applicant presentation. We now open up the public hearing for all the public in attendance and take public comment. Is there anybody still online at all or?
There are no attendees online.
Okay, so we will open and close the public hearing. Yeah, are there any other questions from commissioners? Commissioner Weiss?
Well, just a clarification, and then I've already talked a little bit is I believe there's a way to break the three code upgrades into three different motions, if you will, and there's an obvious purpose for that. And then I have a problem with this because I don't think this is this is a short time, a short short term fix that I really don't think the county needs to get involved with. We have two parties. And there's other options that at least one of the parties can take advantage of as a means of potentially getting a source of water. And I think the county in this particular case is getting involved when it doesn't have to. I would much prefer to see the county spend time and effort, which I know they want to, to study our water, especially the amount of water in the aquifers, to see exactly what we have and how individual wells can impact both, I guess negatively or even maybe positively on those. And I would rather see that type of study done so that when we have scenarios like this, the county is better suited to say provider or association or whatever, our study shows there's adequate water. Or to an applicant, there isn't adequate water. And while you may through the state possibly drill a well, we don't think that's good. So I think from a planning perspective, which is what this body should be involved in, I would, I would much rather pass on this and hopefully in the very near future have the county come back with some sort of water study that gives us better direction. So with that, I'm not in favor of this particular change for, you know, for those reasons. I don't have any problem with the other two. So, thank you.
Commissioner Weiss, the water study, is that, are you speaking to kind of the aquifer or these different water service areas or water providers or?
I would like to see this study take the entire county where appropriate. I'll let staff decide exactly how they want to delineate that, but I think there's a need, I mean, you have the potential down the line of seeing an increase in developments in one fashion or another. And simply because an individual that has a parcel over thirty five acres can go drill water, we don't know yet what those wells are because we don't know how many wells. We don't know how deep they're going to go. So we don't know what the impact of doing all that's going to have on existing wells that service existing customers out there. You know, and until we have that information, I'm not suggesting we pause construction or development. I'm saying we need, I think, since water is a critical issue in in this area, we need to get our hands around it and get a better idea of what we have. I think we have a better idea on the surface water, but I don't think we have that great of idea on the aquifer and where it is and what's the quality of the water. Simply because you can drill a well and pump water doesn't mean the water is that great. You might have to treat it and do other things to make it potable. So and then there's, anyway, but that's that's my point. I think that's better planning for us down the line is to have that study available to us that we can use as we see fit.
And I I'll just jump into, and I understand your sentiment and the big picture concerns, and I think those are valid concerns. However, it doesn't matter why there is a moratorium. They can do a moratorium for no reason or any reason. And we don't have the authority to force a water service area to provide water. Even if we had a study saying you have plenty, you can give more taps, we could not enforce that. This is a situation where I think people are looking to the government for help. And the only way that planning has determined that we can help is by changing our requirements. And the intent is not to have a bunch of wells dug without regulation and oversight. That's something that the state is reviewing and that is something that is controlled under their permits and people have different well permits and they have very specific regulations. So I I don't, I don't know if that helps or or paints a bigger picture, but I do want to, I do want to say that I do understand your big picture concerns and I think those are valid.
And if I can just add a little bit of background, a an implementation outcome from the county's water master plan is to conduct a groundwater study. And so staff is looking to apply for some grants potentially and kick that study off here in late twenty twenty five, early twenty twenty six. But staff would not be recommending allowing any wells to be drilled on properties under thirty five acres until that study is completed and we have an understanding of what the implement implications to the aquifer might be. So I I agree with what you're saying that that study is important. And just so everyone knows, we are looking at moving that forward. In addition, later in twenty twenty five, we'll be kicking off a broader code update to address water adequacy overall. And so part of that will be looking at the confirmations we get from water districts, water service areas, and what they're saying they can provide to properties so that we are only recommending approval on subdivisions where we know water is viable now and into the future. So we're going to look to tighten up that process through a separate code amendment. This was just a very strategic, maybe quick and easier opportunity to help some portion of our population.
Commissioner Eggleston?
Yeah, just a kind of bigger pictures. These aren't that many much of an impact. The Upper Colorado Basin supplies about forty million people water. And on a given day, roughly a hundred and forty two million gallons is used from our aquifer. So having a dozen, a couple dozen thirty five acre plots isn't going to dwindle our aquifer and doing a study isn't going to happen overnight. And so this is a cost effective way that we can provide support for those individuals and it doesn't cost the county any money. So it's a good way to, it's fiscally responsible. It helps our community members. And based on how much are the Upper Colorado Basin actually supplies to the number of people, those few wells won't drain the system. So I think it's a good positive way this county can help without actually doing much negative impact.
Yeah, I I agree with that and I'm I'm in support of this. And I mean, it seems like, I mean, our intent wasn't to prevent people from drilling these wells as the state would allow them to do. I think it was to say if you're if you're within the jurisdiction of a water provider, you ought to be connecting to, you ought to be using that water provider. But if that's not if that's not available, because they don't believe they have the water resources or there's a moratorium for any other reason. I mean, it it makes sense to me that, you know, there there was, it wasn't a policy goal for us just to prevent people from drilling wells and I don't have enough, you know, knowledge or experience in terms of how the state kind of is regulating that or updating kind of the those regulations on a thirty five acre basis. But, you know, it's, I think, our, to me, our role is is clear in this case, so. Comments from any other commissioners? Otherwise entertain a motion. Commissioner Slutsky?
Well, I would support support it as well. And and the problem I have with not supporting it is is that what it it eventually would prohibit people from being able to sell their property or use their property. And I guess that's, I don't think that's our our place just to by default saying this this property is is useless. We're not asking for irrigation wells. That's totally different. But for someone to be able to have a well that delivers four to ten gallons of water a minute, I I think that we should be able to, in whatever way we can, help with that. So I I support it.
Thanks. Commissioner Duffy?
Yeah, I agree with all the commissioners, including Mr. Weiss. I think the adequacy study is of paramount importance. I will differ. I think it's of paramount importance is just because this code change allows you to drill a well, it does not guarantee you any water. And I I want to make sure that the public knows that and people who are on these lots that are over thirty five acres. The onus upon you in the code to provide the adequacy and quality study to the county. And just because we've changed the code that says that you can look for water doesn't mean that it's going to be there.
Yeah. Underscore.
If I can just make one quick suggestion. So I do have a suggested motion up here. It calls out Article Six, Four and Nine. If someone were to only want partial approval to just certain sections of this code in making a motion, you would just want to leave one of those article numbers out.
Yeah. Commissioner Weiss, is that is that your preference?
Yeah, that's what I initially wanted, yeah, so that we could.
Okay. So Ms. Exmark, would you like me to read in the suggested motion excluding Article, Mr. Weiss, that's Six is the one you want removed?
The the water is under Article Four.
Oh, excuse me, Four. So.
So for the suggested motion, you'd like me to read it in once with Articles six and nine? And we will take a roll call vote on that and then read it again for, for number four. Okay. So I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the land use code amendments contained within File Number Twenty-Five, Code zero-two-eight-three, and related to Articles six and nine, subject to the following conditions. The effective date of the proposed code amendments will be June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner King? Motion, a second roll call, please, Ms. Scrutchen's?
Commissioner Eggleston?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Weiss?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Barrick?
Yes.
Slutsky?
Yes.
Chair Row?
Yes.
And second motion?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the Board of County Commissioners approval of the land use code amendments contained within File Number Twenty-Five, Code zero-two-eight-three, and related to Articles four, subject to the following condition. The effective date of the proposed code amendments will be June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five.
Second.
Commissioner Eggleston, second. Ms. Scrutchen's roll call, please.
Commissioner Weiss?
No.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Eggleston?
Yes.
Slutsky?
Yes.
Barrick?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Chair Row?
Yes.
So motion passes. And that was our second and final discussion item this evening. Are there any reports from staff?
Couple of quick updates. We do still need to update our bylaws for this group. I was waiting until the Board of Adjustment finished their update because I believe our bylaws are very similar. And the Board of County Commissioners had some feedback on changes they wanted in those bylaws, so I'm trying to incorporate them into our bylaws. So in the upcoming month, next month or two, I will have a brief staff presentation on some suggested updates to the bylaws. It's mainly to get them in compliance with the board and commission policies that the, the county has, as well as they adopted a board and commission code of conduct. And so we're updating the bylaws merely to comply with those documents. So you will see that coming soon. I'd also like to note that Commissioner Eggleston was reappointed to the board and so he will be serving an additional, I believe it's four-year term. And I believe we also have an opening coming up because at, next month is going to be Commissioner Barrick's last meeting with us. Her term expires at the end of June.
Did we vote on that, I guess, or? On the, the updating of the bylaws, so would that speak to the public comment?
Uh, it would, yes.
Okay.
And I did, did pass along your feedback that you provided me to the county leadership.
Okay. And I'm, I was supposed to provide maybe more detailed feedback and I can still do that?
That would be lovely.
Okay, thanks.
And Ms. Exmacher, the, are there any other commissioners, myself, who need to refile for a second term and apply again?
It does look like your, your term is up at the end of June. I believe the application period has closed, but let me find out for you.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chair Row? I, I must have missed this public comment. There was a conversation about this. I wasn't at the last meeting. So.
It was, I don't think we've actually had kind of a, more of a public conversation on it, so it was just, yeah, more of a passed along that the commissioners had kind of made this decision and, yeah.
As much as that will save us time, I would just like to say that I don't think that's a great idea.
I agree. Yeah, I think I share your viewpoint too, so maybe we just provide those comments to the commissioners and go from there.
With that, we stand adjourned.